I'm calling to order the Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Corredor Madera Planning Commission. Join me or call the role, please. Yes.
Commissioner Bandow.
Here.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
And Commissioner Kenny.
Present.
All right. Join me in the salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time in every meeting, we open the meeting to that which is a public comment for something not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you want to say that we're not going to talk about tonight, you have three minutes to do so. So we'll open that up. And if you have something to say, please step up to the microphone and expound on three minutes. Okay, we see none. No hands raised for that purpose either, probably.
I don't see any hands raised and no emails to public comment at TCML.
All right, then. We will close the public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. We'll go directly to our new hearing, which is for four thirty-eight Oakdale Avenue. This is an appeal application PL twenty-two dash zero zero four eight requesting reversal of the town zoning administrator's approval of variance application. PL twenty-two dash zero zero three one to allow an existing hot tub to remain in its current location within a required front setback area at four thirty-eight Oakdale Avenue. Before we get started, I'm going to ask the commissioners if they've had any ex parte communications. Anybody outside of the normal communication to the applicants or to each other that you want to report on?
I did a side visit.
Good. Side visit, Daniel. All right. Same, Margaret?
I did not.
You did not do a side visit this time. Okay. That gets us through that portion of this. So Mr. Boyle, would you continue, please?
Thank you, Chairman Chase, members of the planning commission and members of the public. Tracy, pull up my PowerPoint slide here and begin my presentation. You. Great. Okay. All right. As Chairman Chase said, this is an appeal of the decision that was made by the zoning administrator or staff approving a variance for an existing hot tub to remain in its current location, which is within one of the front yard setback areas of four thirty-eight Oakdale Avenue. I've got a lot of information on the slide, a lot of words. I'm not going to go through all of them. When we get to the findings, I will kind of give you an overview. And I think if there's a discussion, I think that I can go back to those slides and and hopefully they will help in the discussion if we talk about particular aspects of the findings that the zoning administrator made or particular aspects of the appeal language that's presented. So to give you an overview, so I think the majority of you, except Commissioner Kenny, were involved in this, these two properties when there was a fence dispute. And I'll talk about that in just a bit. So this is the project location just south of Corredor Madera Park at Eastman and Oakdale Avenue. I just want to point out the unique aspect of the two parcels. So we have four thirty-eight Oakdale Avenue and we have four forty Oakdale Avenue. Four thirty-eight in red is the applicant's property, which contains the hot tub. The hot tub is shown in green. Four forty is the appellant's property shown in blue. Four thirty-eight in red is a standard flag lot, one thing we call, we call a flag lot. Four forty is a very unique lot. It was a Z lot. And also want to point out that Eastman Avenue is on the bottom here, winners tough to see, and one accesses the back of four thirty-eight with, with a vehicle or anywhere you want, anything you want being an easement that goes through four forty, which is, which is a driveway and accesses the back of four thirty-eight, which they have a garage. It's a two-story home and there's a lower garage, a garage in the lower area. So that's just an overview of the relationship of the two lots. I'll be talking about the two front property lines at four thirty-eight. So our code says if you're in a flag lot, you have two front property lines, one, the two lines that are parallel to the street. So in this case, propping line number one is adjacent to Oakdale. Right there, we all figure property line, front property line number two is this one here against the with the hot tub is close to, and there'll be another graphic that'll show that more clearly. So this, this shows it a little bit more clear. So now well, same, same orientation, but a lot more information on here. Main thing I wanted you to pay attention to are the, the two big thick red lines. Again, those are the two front property lines for four thirty-eight Oakdale. The blue line is the front setback line for the, the one property line. And I didn't show the blue line that would be for the front property line adjacent to Oakdale because it's not really relevant in this case. Between the, the red line and the blue line, you see the hot tub and decking and, and aspects, other aspects of the property. So the building of four forty is right here. That's the outline of their home. And the, the building of four thirty-eight is, is this box here. And then we have decks and a variety of different things. And back here is that driveway that takes you to, to Eastman if you're main vehicle access. So moving forward, I just want to give a, a brief history. Like my words got cut off by little screen anyways. Project history, a law, a long history of this project. September of two thousand and twenty, the residents of four forty Oakdale filed a complaint to the town requesting us to investigate and look into the fence. The fence, they felt was, was too high. They also had some issues with its location and staff and many, many very different departments of the town worked with both parties trying to come up with a compromise and, and mediate the solution, mediate a solution that was unsuccessful. And in March of two thousand and twenty-one, the residents of four thirty-eight Oakdale, who constructed the fence, applied for design review, a retroactive design review for the fence to exceed six feet in height and also to retroactive variances for the hot tub and the shed to remain in their current locations. Excuse me. The code allows a fence to be up to eight feet in height if one gets approval from the neighbor or designer view. In June of two thousand and twenty-one, this body, the planning commission approved the designer view for the larger fence. At that time, the hot tub and shed were taken out of that application and that was not discussed in that public hearing for a number of different reasons. Time passed and we worked with the owners of four thirty-eight and they agreed to remove the shed. The shed was removed in and is still gone. I was just there last week. In May of this year, the town approved, the town made the determination prior to May that the variance application for the hot tub to remain can be reviewed administratively. We sent out the notice, we did all the proper channels and we approved the variance for the hot tub to remain in its current location. And that was on May twenty-fourth of, of this year. And that approval letter is in your packet, which gives much more detail than I'll go over in my, in my presentation. In June of this year, the owners of four forty appealed the zoning administrator or staff's approval of that variance regarding the hot tub. So that brings us here today. I just want to go over just some of the key findings that are outlined much, in much more detail in the, this, this current staff report as well as the approval letter from May. I'm just pointing out three of them here. One is the special circumstances is what's required if one is to grant a variance. Variances are for unique lots, something physically unique about the situation that makes the applicant, makes it very difficult for the applicant to abide by the rules. In this case, we determined that this unique flag lot, one is that it's the vehicle, vehicle access is not through the, the flag pole, what are called. You know, we have the flag pole and then we have the flag of this lot. Normally, the flag pole is where your car goes up and down. In this case, it doesn't. As I showed you, it's in the back. That flag pole is also quite narrow, thirty feet, where in most parcels of the area have widths of fifty feet or more. Flag lots are not common in this neighborhood and flag lots with the flag pole, again, is not used as a vehicle access or even less common. The drive, also another factor in determining that this property had special circumstances is that the driveway from Eastman Drive consumes a significant portion of the backyard of the home. So those are the, the special circumstances that staff was able to identify and was able to make finding number one. Finding number two is basically are those, do those special circumstances make a strict application of the code? Do that, does that result in a practical difficulty or hardship for the property owner? And we were able to say, yes, we feel it does. The hardship required the hot tub again to be located in the driveway or one, one option would be located in the driveway or garage or the rear area. Another one is to occupy, another possible place to put it would be to occupy the center of what's, what their front yard resolving in less privacy for both parties. And also would, we felt would limit the use of the existing open lawn area of, of their yard. So that we are able to make finding two, we're able to make finding three in that we did not feel this would, would constitute a grant of special privileges, special privileges and is consistent with the limitations of, and of other properties in the vicinity. We feel that the, the property line separating these two lots, the way it's dividing the two properties is more of dividing the two rear yards of four thirty-eight and four forty. With the layout of the two lots and the locations of the two homes, the property line most adjacent to the hot tub serves more as a rear property line for both parcels and both yards. Many factors make the rear yard and the central portion of the front yard inadequate areas to place the hot tub. And there's only a small portion of the hot tub is closer than five feet to the property line. And we felt this six, seven inch encroachment was minor and that it would not be considered a special privilege. So we're able to make finding number, number three. So that's, and then there are numerous other findings which are in the staff report, but I felt those three are the most key to, to highlight at this point. Now to discuss the, the appeal, which was, which was submitted by the owners of four forty Oakdale. Here, I've just given a brief kind of summary of the appeal and then staff's response. The first, first statement in the appeal is that the application states that the determination variance approval was not per the town code, per these two sections. And here, here I, and in the staff report, I outlined what those two sections are. The first one talks about setbacks and location of accessory structures. It does not specifically address hot tubs. The second code section, eighteen oh eight oh three oh talks about, does talk about hot tubs and swimming pools. And in the approval letter, we were able to make the findings for the variance that basically says one does not need to follow this statute because one is applying for a variance. And that's the kind of the, the gist of the variance is one's asking to, to not follow, you know, all the rules to the letter of the law. And the second appeal statement was was expressed that the, the appellant expressed that the determination decision was in error and was was, would be detrimental to the appellant's enjoyment of their property and attraction, the value of their property in perpetuity. And that's finding number four on that they're, they're objecting to. In, in the staff report, I, I, again, this is just a very brief summary. We go into detail of that staff closely looked at the variance finding number four. We looked at the, the variance request, the location of the hot tub and, and determined that it, we were able to make finding number four. And again, a much more detailed discussion of that can be found on page four of the staff report. In that section, I talk about our noise ordinance and other rules and regulations that the town has if one is using a hot tub or any other part of their property after ten PM or being disruptive towards, towards the neighbors. The next appeal statement summary talks about the variance findings. Number one through three, they felt were in error and that the development of four thirty-eight was done without procurement, procuring a professional survey of the property. We don't always require surveys for all projects. And I did note that I did, however, add a condition of approval in the resolution. If that's approved, that would deny the appeal and it would include a condition that would address if the building officials discretion, if a survey is required. That condition does say that the applicants will have to have their hot tub inspected to show that it was properly installed, verify its location and, and make sure all plumbing and electrical work is, is done per code. And at that point, the, the building official may ask for a survey at that time. Lastly, is the appeal statement dealing with finding number five and stating that the appellant doesn't think that the, the exhibit presented in the staff report represents and, and is appropriate. And I just want to jump toward that exhibit. So, so this exhibit, which is in the approval letter for the staff level approval is showing in purple the areas of, of the front, the front and side setbacks. So the purple areas for lot four thirty-eight is basically where one cannot put a hot tub. The blue striped are the areas where one could put a hot tub. And as you see up on the top is the back where the driveway is. Closer down below is the blue striped area where the hot tub could be located and meet the code and be in the middle of the, of the, the front yard and the grassy area that we talked about before. And then on the right is showing where the hot tub is. So staff does feel this, this was an appropriate exhibit to show the various setbacks and where the hot tub could be located without a variance. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission review all the materials and and all the correspondence from the appellant and the applicants conduct a public hearing and staff recommends that the commission deny the appeal application and uphold the zoning ordinance decision by approving the attached resolution. And that concludes my staff report. Then I have the oh, for Chairman Chase, I have the order of proceedings for appeals. And then I also have the various findings, if we want to talk about any of those in, in detail. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle. At this time, we do what we call opening the public portion of the hearing. And but before we get to that, actually, we'll see if the commissioners have any questions for staff. Margaret, do you have any questions for this staff? Okay. All right, Mr. Rizzo.
Phil, I just had one question. When you guys were determining the front yard setback of the, I guess the the property line that's setback maybe forty feet. I guess it was. It sounded like when we first reviewed this, the staff had a really hard time determining if that should be treated as, as a side yard setback. Do you guys feel that it's going to, in the future, that it's going to stay as, as determined in, in our last hearing as a front yard setback when we have this sort of unique condition?
Yes, yes, because the code does state in the definition of flag lot states that a, a flag lot has two property lines that are the, the one you're facing, facing the street or parallel to the street. And then if there is another one, as in this condition, also parallel, then, then those are the two, the two front property lines. And, and just a point of, of reference is, you know, when this house was built, four thirty-eight, you can see it was built right on the blue line. And the blue line is the twenty-foot front setback. And so they put the house in the right spot. I don't know if that answers your question.
It did. I, I just didn't, you know, I know that there was some discussion about it maybe being, you know, treated as a side setback because it was already set back, set back more than twenty feet from the, from the street, obviously. It's just kind of unique that it's far away from the street.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. And Commissioner Rizzo, there was some discussion back when we did the fence discussion and, and we landed on that. We will stick with the, the definition of flag lot and that there'll be two, two front property lines.
Thank you.
So from you, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Bundy.
No questions.
Daniel. All right. Nor have I got any questions for staff. So now we open the public portion. And the appellant will have ten minutes to make their, their statement.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to discuss our request to reverse this hot tub variance. My name is Risa Lee and this is my husband, David Teakle. We're the owners of four forty Oakdale. Thank you. We are the owners of the property adjacent to the Denny's who own the four thirty-eight Oakdale property with the hot tub. Let's talk about the problem. So you heard moments ago from Mr. Boyle, the following facts. The facts are that the municipal code requires a twenty-foot setback and prohibits hot tubs in the front setback. The Denny hot tub is located four and a half feet from the, one of the front property lines. That is the undisputable fact. When Mr. Boyle made his assessment, he did stand on the upper deck of our patio on our property. On that property, he took this photo, on our property, he took this photo and made the assessment that the fence ensures the hot tub is not visible from the backyard, from the yard or back deck of four forty Oakdale, our property, and said that the fence does its job to attenuate sound. Here's what he doesn't show you. This hot tub is actually located underneath the two bedrooms of our home. Hot tub noise can be heard from my child's bedroom as well as our master bedroom and bath with the windows closed. What he also didn't realize is that this is the bulk of our living space where we spend the bulk of our time. We spend our time in our kitchen, on our deck, in our bedrooms. We can hear hot tub noise throughout our living space. So while Mr. Boyle observed the property and the hot tub with no one in it, here's what we see and hear. We see the Denny's getting in, getting out and sitting in the hot tub. That's not privacy. We hear the Denny's from the moment the hot tub cover creaks to the jets that turn on, to the conversations. We hear it all. That's not privacy. The morning hot tub, we're sitting and having breakfast, we hear them get in the hot tub. Late night parties when their son is having hot tub parties past ten o'clock on a weekday, we hear it. Later on weekends, guests, we hear it all. Here's an example of, we're not supposed to be in contact with the Denny's, but Wednesday night, my husband and I are in bed, we have to ask to maybe quiet down the hot tub party. Here is the submission from the Denny's, the plans that were drawn out for this hot tub variance. What I have added here is actually the three X's of our bedrooms that I showed earlier. What you can now see is the location of the hot tub in context with the windows and the, our living space. So while I am not a, and a general contractor, and I can't draw this, Mr. Denny, as a general contractor, can. So I've added the component that is missing from the story. Let's talk about the findings in Mr. Boyle's report.
Hello, and thank you for having us over this evening. Unfortunately, the cause is all that, not all that fun. So findings were pretty detailed by Mr. Boyle. Thank you, Mr. Boyle. I'm going to touch on a few that the findings, I think, stand out and really need to be spoken to. So I'm going to be referring to the retroactive variance approval letter. And I'll be fairly general, so that's not to drag us through the details and use up time. I'm going to refer to staff findings number three. And it states in here that this is not seen as a grant of special privileges. And I'm sorry, the variance is not seen as a grant of special privileges and is consistent with its limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. We disagree with this. We feel like this is in many ways a special privilege being granted to the Denny's in form of this variance. Why? All the homes in the area are R1 medium density. A general survey reveals that there are no other residences where there is a variance for a front yard setback that results with a hot tub in the front yard. And more importantly, or more importantly, there is no residence, there are no residences subjected to a neighbor's hot tub so close to their home bedrooms and living spaces. So I'll now make reference to the staff findings number five. And this speaks to compromise that is fair to all parties. It also speaks to development that is compatible with existing neighborhood character and structures. Again, we disagree with this finding. We don't see it as a compromise. The Denny's put in We don't see it as a compromise. The Denny's put in a hot tub and deck. That violate municipal code setbacks is significant and have significant impacts to our home. And plenty staff chose to approve this. This is not compatible with neighborhood character. What other homes have hot tubs in their front yards? Plenty staff failed to prove that a variance for a hot tub in a front yard with a setback of four and a half feet, instead of the required twenty feet. Is consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. And I continue with finding five. Finding five also speaks to well-designed improvement that is consistent with residential character of the neighborhood. And which avoids any significant negative impacts to the surrounding property owners. Again, we are in great disagreement with this. We don't believe this is a well-designed improvement at all. Bill Boyle clearly identifies two large spaces where the Denny's could have put a hot tub in compliance with setbacks. My wife will address that later. We find this not be consistent with neighborhood character. What other homes have hot tubs in the front yard? Planning staff fails to prove that a hot tub in a front yard with a setback of four and a half feet, instead of the required twenty feet. Is consistent with the neighborhood. This causes a mutual negative impact. Significant impact due to privacy. We can see in here the Denny's whenever they use a hot tub. This is something that will go on and on, perhaps beyond our tenure in the property, perhaps beyond the Denny's tenure in the property. One last variance finding that I'm going to address is the municipal code that addresses noise. And Mr. Boyle put this in the report as a safeguard. Code enforcement. So here we are twenty one months after we filed a complaint in regards to the hot tub. Twenty months. Noise enforcement. How would this be done if this were to come about? Who will enforce this? What is the process? Is the town outfitted to readily do this? What will happen with short term or long term rentals or a change of ownership that exacerbates this noise situation? Like to turn the mic over to my wife and she'll discuss some solutions.
So what could we do beyond leaving this hot tub where it is? Mr. Boyle already presented two solutions. They are in blue. Option A, in the Denny backyard. Option B, in the Denny front yard. The code says that no hot tub should be in the front yard. This is a Google, Google Maps. Again, I don't work in construction like the Denny's. I can't draw it. What I can show you is that all of these homes within our block have backyards. So do the Denny's. Ours is a little funky. It's that thing on the side. At the end of the day, everybody has a backyard. And if you were to put in a hot tub, you would put it in your backyard. You'd be facing someone else's backyard. So it would be typical that backyard to backyard noise. All of those things would happen. The Denny's chose to put the hot tub in between two homes. Is that consistent with the neighborhood? That's what Mr. Boyle says in his findings. We disagree. What does the backyard look like for the Denny's? This is the space within the setback, provides privacy and is in that backyard to backyard relationship. Again, of usable space and noise consistent with backyards. Option B, this is the front yard option that Mr. Boyle pointed out. This option is actually four feet down slope. It's within a setback. It it actually is private. We don't have windows on the side. The only way I was able to take pictures is because our window is up by the ceiling. I had to stand on the bed and a ladder to take this picture. We would not be seeing the Denny's. They would not be seeing us see them.
Can you wrap up, please?
This is the last slide. Thank you. The Denny's made a poor choice. They've ignored codes. They've ignored property lines. They didn't consider the neighbors. And they're actually asking for a variance six years later. Does the town want to reward behavior like this? Does the town want to set a precedence for ignoring setbacks? There's a mutual negative impact. No one's getting privacy. In the future, this decision to have a variance is a permanent impact on our properties. When properties change hands, or if there was a short term or long term rental, this would exacerbate this problem. There are viable options I just showed them. Just because the hot tub is there now, doesn't mean it should stay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now the applicant will make your presentation.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. Maybe we can start out with. Our thought process when we actually put the hot tub in six years ago. And what what we did to determine where we were going to put it. So. Our assessment of the code was that. The front yard setback was measured from the. The the line parallel to the street, closest to the street. To which access was obtained to the property. But that was, that was our, that was our reading of the of the code. So we. We looked at our rest of our property, looked for the best place that we could put it, that really. Allowed for the most privacy for us and our neighbors. And as you saw, that that's where we ended up putting it. The other options that have been presented and were just discussed, I think. Phil covered most of this, so I won't try not to repeat, but the backyard, I think you saw in the photo, that's where our vehicle accesses the garage. And if a hot tub was in that space, we would not be able to pull into our garage. So, and then in front yard. The unique nature of the pole, as it was described, the thirty foot pole, that's the main access in into our house. When all, when all of our neighbors come and visit, when guests visit, they they come in through that little corridor. And our front door is essentially at the end of that corridor where 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 you see the the home structure. So by placing the hot tub in that location, that other alternate location, you literally have to walk around it. In order to get to our front yard and right to our front door and our deck where we do our outdoor eating. And entertaining is right there as well. So the hot tub in its current location predates. The the Teakle's purchase of the property. So it's been there before that they they moved in. And it's actually existed for six years and we haven't gotten one complaint. So the complaint that you saw earlier, the the text message, the friendly exchange was actually just just recent. And actually, the, any mention to the location of a hot tub was never even brought up until the fence issue. That Phil mentioned earlier occurred. So I guess we're not really sure why this is coming up now, but we wanted to give the. Commission an understanding of where our head was at when we actually made the decision to put the hot tub where it is.
I just wanted to add that to Brad's point that the text that Risa showed was in July. And it was post their appeal and post the variance approval. And it is the first time they have ever communicated to us about the hot tub. And it wasn't a party. It was our sons enjoying it. We have other living spaces in that same area. We have, it is. As they said about their primary outdoor living space, that is our primary and only outdoor living space. So we have our deck where we eat dinners and we eat lunches and breakfast. We have a fire pit and an entertaining area. The hot tub is probably the least amount of noise that we would ever produce in that space when we have and entertain guests and people. So again, any anytime as I, as she even showed in the text, as soon as she texted, we immediately said. You know, we'll, we'll make sure that that it's quiet. We've never gotten, gotten a complaint like that prior to this and. Just quickly, indeed, in the fourteen years we've lived in this community. Eight years of which we've been going through kind of staged renovations, working with the town and permits and inspections. We have, because of the uniqueness of the lot, we have six adjoining property owners. Four of which have been bought and sold in the time that we've lived there, including the Teakle property. And all that time and all that construction and then all of the interactions we've had, we have never had one issue. We've never had one complaint. We have never had one code violation, ten different property owners. Until we built this fence as a result of of four years of litigation. And since then, we've received, I think. Four or five accusations and complaints, all from the same neighbor and all. Five to six years after they have been living at the property.
Okay, that's all you've got to say. All right. Thank you. Visioners, questions for either of these parties and or staff? I'll start with you, Daniel. Do you have any questions for either the applicant or the appellant? Okay, we can do that. Yeah, Dr. Bundy.
No.
All right.
My first question is for Ann. I'm just curious about the noise ordinance. If if there's anything in there about splashing of pools or or hot tubs, or is it just based on decibels? In a loudness. Anything specific to the use of a hot tub or pool at a certain time, or is it just the actual noise level?
To be frank, Commissioner, I have not worked with the town's noise ordinance thus far. I can look it up fairly quick, but Mr. Boyle may have an answer on the tip of his tongue.
I I can look it up as well. I'm I'm quite ninety nine percent certain that there is. No specific language regarding noise generated from a hot tub. I, like I said in the staff report, there is. The noise ordinance stipulates decibel levels after ten PM. And but I don't believe it specifically says, you know, where those are coming from, but basically if it's infringing upon a neighboring property and it's after ten PM. The normal course of action is to, I say right here, it's unlawful for any person without justification to make. Or continue or cause to permit to be made or continued. Between the hours of ten PM and six AM daily, any excessive or offensive noise that disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighbor. Or that is unreasonably disturbing to a person of ordinary sensitivities residing in the area. So that is the the quote from, from the noise ordinance straight out of, and it's the section is nighttime general noise regulations.
There, there is also a decibel regulation. For R ones, you're prohibited from a noise level more than twenty five decibels above the local ambient for a cumulative period of time. Of more than ten minutes in any hour, thirty five minutes for more than three minutes. I I would doubt that the operation. Of a hot tub would reach that level, but I can't say for sure.
And just also to follow one more thing, if one was, one would call the police if if a situation came up at ten PM. And the police would would come and at times in other jurisdictions I've worked and perhaps here that. The officers sometimes carry noise meters and they'll go in the backyard and say, here it is at such a time. So even though it's happening late at night, the police would respond.
All right, Jim. Margaret, do you have any questions?
Just to clear up some of the history. The hot tub has been in place for six years. Is that? So the hot tub predated them. Yeah.
So when the first property lived in.
Okay. That was the question.
Okay.
Yeah, just for clarification, it's a pre standing hot tub. So we, when we first put it in, we had a little stairway, you know? You get into it, right? Little stair. And then when we. I did want to clarify something. I think in.
Just a quick reminder that those that are zooming into this meeting won't be able to hear this commentary unless you're using the microphone, which should still be on.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, Margaret, do you have anything else?
In that neighborhood, how many? I just think it's oddly shaped. How many oddly shaped lots in that that immediate vicinity are there?
I can, I can zoom out and look at the map. I I do not have account for you.
I mean, I'm assuming since there's a special name for these lots, they must be fairly common.
You know, flag lots are are relatively common within a jurisdiction. Flag, if flag lots, like I point out, in this particular neighborhood are not super common. Yeah, I if you want to, I can get back to you and try to come up with a number.
Yes, he's going to try to pull that up, I think, here.
Yeah. Oh, I can bring it up. One second. Okay. Thank you. So this, there, oops. Little bit tough to see, but.
And and on this, would you just run your cursor to where the access to the garages?
Sure, there's my cursor there. I can probably see it. So that's, this is, this is Eastman running up and down the screen. In north to south, and then that ease, the easement goes almost underlining the E in in Corta. And that's, that's the easement that allows you to go from Eastman to the back of the Denny's property or that that garage.
Do you know when that easement was made?
I don't know when it was made, no.
Okay, deed stated as being sixty seven by the applicant.
And is that when? So how did, is that when the house was built?
It looks like there's one other flag lot on that entire block. Is that fair to say, Phil? And it looks like a rear access.
I believe there's one off of Chapman, yes. Chapman runs parallel to to Eastman.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
All right, Margaret.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Daniel.
So, Phil. In town, where we have these flag lot situations. They almost always where the extended property line, in this case, the forty foot front setback line.
is facing the backyard of the neighbor of the neighboring house.
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Is it typical where the front, the zoning definition of the front yard extends back beyond the flag, on the pole? That that property where the hot tub is shown, that portion of the lot is usually facing the backyard of the adjacent house?
Yes, I mean, I I think one way to look, I would say a typical flag lot is sometimes if if a large piece of property has a single family home on it in a very large backyard, some sometimes that that individual would subdivide their large lot and create a flag lot so you so the new owner can drive back to their lot and and basically their new home will be in the backyard. So that's, in my opinion, that's a more typical flag lot. So you have you have a flag lot, which is the red one, and then four forty would be a normal rectangular lot. Again, that that's a that's a more typical flag lot, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just clear one another thing up?
Certainly.
On four forty, do they access their property through that narrow corridor also?
Not not with a vehicle. They they can access that through by foot, but their driveway is and their garage is off of Oakdale Avenue.
Would you take it back a slide, Phil, to that overview of the lots in town, right? So there's not very many of these to answer the question of commonality. Over there off of Buena Vista, it looks like there's a flag lot where a front yard faces the backyard.
Yeah, like I said, in my opinion, this is a very, again, for it's it's unique. It's unique, certainly, certainly the configuration of of four forty and that access to four thirty-eight, in my opinion, is is quite unique.
Okay.
If it sheds any light, the subdivision ordinance no longer allows the creation of flag lots. There will be occasions when we will have to allow it under S B nine. But going to Commissioner Vandell's question about how common they are, I I believe they're discouraged here, and I know they are in many jurisdictions there. So they're typically an older lot that has been carved up or back in the day before modern subdivision ordinances.
Thank you. Okay, before we turn it over to public comment, anybody else have any more questions they want to daylight? No, Margaret, Daniel?
No, I just but Ann just reminded me S B nine might create more of these.
That's a separate headache, right? Okay. So at this time, we'll open this up to public comment for anybody and we'll give you three minutes to speak at the microphone, if that's what you choose to do. So if you want to stand up and make a comment, let's get an active line going behind the microphone. So let's see what we can do. Anybody want to speak? Or you all here in support, moral support?
I just wanted to make the comment that we live at four oh eight Oakdale down the street. And we actually have the flag lot behind us.
Okay.
And have worked very closely with our neighbors throughout the reconstruction of our home. And in fact, built in an easement so that we could redirect water to actually work through their property and found it to be a very cordial environment. And because of the unique uniqueness of their lot, they do entertain and they entertain. We're a second floor unit where we can see them entertaining. And we have lived through that and respected their privacy as they've respected our privacy to the best of their ability. And they do actually have a hot tub that backs up to our property. And I know it doesn't fit within the context of the front lot and all what you're talking about. But it is a privacy component of the discussion, and I just wanted to point that out that it's a close neighborhood. We we hear our neighbors, we recognize that, and we all purchased houses knowing that that was the case in our neighborhood. So I just wanted to leave you with that.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, ma'am, would you mind giving your name and address?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Hannah Richards, and it's four oh eight Oakdale.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to do the same? I don't see anybody standing up. We'll come back to the room. Tracy, do you have any hands up?
Those that are zooming in, if you want to provide comment, you would utilize the hand raise feature on your Zoom window if you want to make a comment. I don't see any hands that are raised. Chair Chase.
Okay.
No emails have been received either.
Certainly some qualified people online. But they're not choosing to comment. All right. So no one else is going to join this commentary in the room. So we'll close this public comment. And each of the parties have five minutes to rebut the commentary or whatever they want to say. So it starts with the applicant to take five minutes to say whatever you would like to say. If anything.
I know if you could step to the microphone, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Just wanted to say thank you to the commission and to the town staff. There's been a lot of hours and a lot of time put into all of this, and we appreciate all the research that has been done on on our behalf and on behalf of our neighbors in our neighborhood. And thank you.
All right, thank you. And now the appellant can make a statement if you wish to.
Hi, I just wanted to clarify, there was some discussion around noise. And the discussion centered around, well, how noisy is the hot tub? It's not only the noise of the actual hot tub. With the hot tub, because the jets are on, conversation gets louder. Hot tubs also invite multiple parties, especially to the parties that we alluded to. There are hot tub parties that happen. Hot tub parties get loud. On a weeknight when we need to work or get up and go to work, that I don't want to always text Stacy Denny. We were told that we couldn't speak to each other by our lawyers. I don't want to engage. I don't want to call the cops, which I think, Phil, that was the solution. I don't want to have to always raise noise issues. This is caused because the Denny's put their hot tub there. I don't want to be the neighbor that always has to complain about noise and has no one to turn to. This is our moment to ask for your help so that we can solve this now. And nobody wants this to drag on. I don't want to complain all the time. I want to just enjoy our home. And we deserve that. We deserve to be treated fairly. We didn't put in a legal hot tub there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions for either of these parties? No. Jim, Margaret? Okay. And no questions for staff at this point from anybody? Margaret, you look like you're thinking hard. It's not over, but then I will give the appellant a chance to say something as well. So okay, all right, you didn't use your time, so.
I just, the communication thing between neighbors, we've reached out numerous, numerous times. There's nothing that prevents us from communicating with our neighbors. I used to call my wife a couple of months ago to comment on the turkey, the turkeys that were on our roof, right, that she could see. So we've had a number of outreach efforts, you know, to open up the lines of communication, even through, you know, the very uncomfortable litigation that we went through around the the property line and the easement years ago. So I just think it's important for the commission, though, that we've continued to really just try to make, you know, our situation better and open up the lines of communication. And they know that they can always text or call us if if they feel that something's disturbing them. We would never turn anybody away from that, no matter what we've been through, so.
Okay, so if the appellant would like to comment further on that, you may, or whatever you'd like to comment on. So I, this is getting to where it's.
We'll keep it short. Our last communication with the Denny's was not about turkeys. That was a text message. We got a pretty intense email that said, my husband was harassing their son. We do not want to engage. This is not what we want to talk to the Denny's at all. We do not want to engage. So you're asking us to escalate to noise issues to the police. Let's not do that. Let's solve all of the encroachments, all of the Denny things that they have built, put it in the right spot. We won't need to talk again. Thank you.
I apologize and thank you for your time. Being that this topic communication is brought up and that I was accused of something in the email, it was startling. I work with kids, I always have. I've had a few other jobs. I've been a teacher for many years, some Peace Corps. And I was in the backyard working when I saw a car drive into our fruit tree, which is on the so-called driveway easement. And so as the car pulled out of having backed into a tree, which has a trunk of this size, that's about three inches diameter, I watched him start to back up into the tree again. And I ran down there, leaping over our unlandscaped backyard and said, hey! I was calling him out of care for him, this car, my tree. And I continued what walked down, I walked down there and I helped him. I said, forward, turn the wheel this way, now back up, drive carefully. And then I we received an email saying that Stacy Denny was in the backyard watching all this. And she observed me doing what I did. And the and I was accused of speaking this way to harassing a youth. But the adult who was there who said she saw me was never visible, nor did she speak to me. So this, these are the types of communications that are occurring, and this happens. I don't know what kind of things people are saying about me, but that was far from the truth and it hurts. So we don't have a really easy pathway of communication. And our lawyer, a long timer, did did tell us to not communicate with our neighbors. And it's a sad thing. It's a very sad thing. I never wanted this type of interaction with anybody, much less my neighbor. So I apologize. Stop there. Thank you for your time.
Right. So this is this getting to a point of tit for tat. So I'm going to end it. You've both had chances to say something. It's not appropriate to have this kind of dialogue here at the planning commission. So we we just don't have that type of space or time or intention. So that's that. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions at all at this point? Okay, so we're going to close this public portion of the hearing, and we're going to take it back up here to the dais. And we're going to talk about it. I expect to hear at first just your thoughts, if you are sure of what you want to say to determine your final opinion, go ahead and say it. Otherwise, let's just get some commentary out on the table. Dr. Bundy.
So unfortunate that the relationship between the neighbors had has gone so far south in relationship to to this issue in this hot tub. Certainly, it is a unique lot. And trying to determine what's an appropriate front yard in a very peculiar lot like this is difficult. I do think that the Denny's have done some nice things in regard to landscaping to improve the privacy. The pittusporum they're growing up look very healthy. Those should grow up, get bigger, provide a greater degree of privacy. I also think that what you're going through right now, what Dave and Reese are going through are are what a lot of us have gone through. They've lived in a tight knit, close neighborhood for a long time, is teenagers. And teenagers do make a lot of noise. And, you know, that can happen for several years and then they're off to college and hopefully, you know, fly the nest and are out on their own. So I I do think that the the findings, as Phil described them, are correct in relationship to this particular lot. And I would deny the appeal.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Mr. Rizzo.
I just want to start off by saying, I think that if if we go back to when the Denny's bought their property, they inherited a property with their backyard and their garage where it is. I'm correct. So they didn't have an opportunity to develop that as their backyard. It just seemed to be an egress for their cars and storage. So I would say naturally they started to build out the areas between the properties. So I guess that there might not have been an opportunity to build a backyard at the time that they purchased it. Feel like, you know, this is this is the definition of a variance. We're doing an administrative process by which Nap can can apply for relief from the strict interpretation and requirements of the town ordinance due to special and unique characteristics. And we're seeing that there's only two flag lots in the entire neighborhood. We don't know about the whole community, but it's pretty unique to the neighborhood to have this kind of condition. I also think that all the other locations that that were outlined in the graphic that Phil had outlined, the area in the in the front, in, I guess, the front yard, middle of the yard. There was even an area that was right next to where the fence fence post, which is right on the property line, that was actually, you know, an area that you could put this hot tub would would not really make a difference in the privacy or the noise conditions that can happen with a with with a spa. And I definitely think that as far as privacy goes, putting it there is not is not the case. I think it would be worse for both property owners. So, you know, I can kind of conclude and 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 agree with our staff that I can make all the findings. I guess, is this to deny the appeal? Do you didn't deny the appeal?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Jim. Margaret?
It's it's particularly disturbing to me that after what we went through with the fence line and and thought that that would be a good solution and and spent a lot of time with it, that there are still issues that are coming up and it it seems it's it's almost heartbreaking to see what's happened. I I think the of particular significance, at least as I look at it, is the shape of the two lots. And also the definition of what the front lot line is. I think that although these retroactive appeals or look backs at things once something has gone wrong, bothers me a lot, and it's happened a couple of times recently. I think that there was a good and honest reason why the definition of what that front lot line could or could not be. And I think that's an easy thing to kind of interpret incorrectly, or the interpretations might change. I think the the use of the backyard or the back area would be impossible to put the the hot tub there. I I think that this actually is probably the only probably the only place to put the hot tub that's going to be, uh, useful and enjoyable for the people. I think that Bob is right about the noise of teenagers. I think, um, I think all of us have, have gone through that in neighborhoods. And after a couple of years, it, it is gone. And, and so I do think the, uh, analysis that the town did was, was thorough. And in this case, uh, correct.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, Daniel.
Thank you. Uh, I do think this is a special circumstance. Uh, I mean, the purpose of a variance is to be able to address special circumstances. Uh, and so, uh, it, it is appropriate, uh, to, to seek a variance in this particular situation, given the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, uh, the access to the lot. I, I don't think that, uh, either of the potential locations that would not require a variance are viable. The, the, um, backyard is obviously access for the, for the cars, for the garage and, and parking. And, um, the, uh, the other location is visible from Oak, Oakdale. I, I don't think we really want to see hot tubs uh, visible from Oakdale or any, uh, residential neighborhood from any public street, uh, to extent that we can avoid that. And I've been involved in many, uh, acoustic studies, and I actually think the noise would be worse in that location. Um, because there's, the fencing is so far away. It's not going to, sound's not going to bounce off the fence. It's going to just travel. So I think we could go in that direction and find out whether they have a worse noise situation. I think, um, I think, again, because of this situation, we essentially the front yard area where the forty foot front yard line is essentially is a backyard situation because you have a backyard facing a front yard. It functionally is a backyard uh, in this particular situation. Uh, so I think it's not inappropriate. Uh, to be, to be treated, uh, as the backyard for this particular lot. So I would also, um, uh, go along with denying the appeal and approving the staff, uh, recommendation.
Thank you, Daniel. I appreciate that. Um, for my part, um, this is difficult, but the two parties are at a point where they really have enmity for each other and it's, it's too bad. You know, we're a close community and that when you're back to back like that, it's, it's just impossible if you don't get along with your neighbors. And I wish that were not the case. I just wish that, um, you know, that you could find a way through this, but perhaps with time it will heal. One can hope. Just hope that somehow there's a, an outreach that will cure some of this anger. Um, privacy is, uh, a problem. And I see it. I have neighbors that I can hear whether they're next to the property line or they're on the other side of their lot. It's the same volume. I don't think it makes any difference where they are. And it's, I find it annoying. I like them, but I'm annoyed. And it's a problem. Um, I may have had to disqualify myself because we have a hot tub. And it's had teenagers in it. And it's had people in it. And I've sometimes wondered, geez, are the neighbors going to get upset? Well, we've never had a complaint, but, um, it's a problem. And that's just the, the fact. I have neighbors that have decks overlooking us. They look down into our property. I look up at them. Hear them. I hear neighbors through the trees. There are parties that go on. It's a problem. But that's the life we've selected, I think, to be here with all of this. Um, I think that what staff did here was try to, uh, find a way to, uh, accept the variance application. And I think they did a good job of doing that. I think it's appropriate. And I think we should, uh, approve this, uh, this resolution approving the staff, uh, variance application. So that's where we all stand. So I think it's time to, uh, call for, uh, a motion here. It's right here in the.
Someone want to make the, the motion? Should be attachment one.
Yes, attachment two, Bob. Yeah.
That's.
Uh, in the matter of, uh, retroactive variance for a hot tub to remain four feet, five inches, code twenty feet from, uh, one of the front property lines at four thirty eight Oakdale Avenue.
There's no one, another number on.
And no, actually, Bundy, you want to, if you wouldn't mind reading from, it's attachment one, page one. Um, the, the resolution, resolution two, two, zero, one.
Okay, yeah, alright. Excuse, sorry. Uh, in the matter of the appeal of application, PL two, two dash oh, oh, four, eight, requesting reversal of the town zoning administrator's approval of variance application, PL twenty two dash oh, oh, three, one, to allow an existing hot tub to remain in its current location within a required front lot yard setback at four thirty eight Oakdale Avenue. This is resolution number twenty two dash oh, one, three. To deny the appeal.
Motion to approve this, uh, resolution. Okay. Take a vote, please.
Commissioner Bandell?
I, I, yes.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
Chair Chase.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all very much for this. I realize it's an effort to be here and, um, expound and state your case. Thank you very much. All right. So we'll take a little break for those of you who want to exit the room. We're back. Thank you, Tracy. All right. So now we are at item six, A, planning construction, uh, commission, construction. Planning commission meeting start time. Um, this will be a short item, so, um, we can get this off the table. So. So, um, Martha, you actually have your name on this, so.
I do. So, so at, at the last meeting, Commissioner Bundy had, um, suggested that we have a discussion about meeting start time. And so it's on tonight's agenda as a discussion to get the thoughts of all the commissioners. And if it's agreed by all to move the start time to six thirty, we would come back with a change to the rules and procedures of the, the planning commission manual. So we wanted to get your feedback to see if that time was preferable or if members preferred to keep it at the seven PM start.
Okay. So with that said, um, we got Dr. Bundy, who's the instigator. And your position is, sir?
I start at six thirty.
All right. Daniel, what is your position?
Well, I'd like to hear a little bit.
Go ahead.
Uh, a little bit more, whether there's any constraints for anybody getting here by six thirty. And, um, as Commissioner Rizzo suggested, maybe we should be providing dinner for everybody, given the early time. Uh, and then also just a point of, uh, of opinion that just could be start earlier does not mean we're going to end early. So, uh, that's what I have to say.
Okay. We'll come back to you on this. All right. So thank you. Um, Jim.
I mean, I could really go with the flow on this, but if, if we wanted to bring consistency to all the meeting times, it started six thirty, then I'm fine with that. But i- it's the rest of the commission wants to start later. I'm fine with that too. So I don't really have a strong opinion.
Okay. So the, the one, uh, wrestling matches was Margaret and I don't know if she can make it. So.
Um, it's, it's a difficulty for me because Tuesday afternoon is a court day for me. So I'm in court until for quite a while. And so, um, it would be difficult.
All right.
I, I would do it as long as Bob is bringing sub sandwiches, but I would prefer it to remain at seven.
Okay. Um, I think it should be unanimous. That's my feeling about it.
Great. I'm the bad guy.
Yeah, the, the reason that, uh, we were at seven and all the other meetings were at, uh, six thirty, uh, I think particular was Phyllis Metcalf really had a difficult time making it at six thirty. So because we weren't unanimous, we did it at seven. Margaret feels this would be difficult and inconvenience, uh, uh, for her to get here at six thirty, then we should leave it at seven.
Okay. So I think that's where it stands then.
Thank you.
That we'll leave it at seven and, uh, until further notice, right?
I suppose I had.
So this will save staff some time, uh, because they won't have to write a staff report for the council. All right. So now on the serious business, as if that wasn't serious. Item six B, design review discussion, review and discussion of potential amendments to Court of Madera zoning ordinance regulation related to design review. This is a significant item. It's something that I think staff has been thinking about for a very long time and, uh, working on very thoroughly. Um, I, for those of you who are watching or thinking about enduring this, we're not going to get through it all tonight. So, um, this is not a, this has not got a resolution attached to it. This is about getting through items of discussion with the commission and, uh, staff taking feedback. With that said, um, I'll turn it over to staff right now and let you guys have at it and, uh, guide us through this maze of information that you produced.
Thank you, Chairman Chase. Um, I'm going to start off and this is a, a group effort, um, by, by Tracy and I. Um, it is a lot of information and, um, this has been something that's been discussed, um, by the planning commission, different members of the planning commission and staff over, over many years and, um, our, um, just jump to our, our purpose of doing this is, um, is asking the, the planning commission and the public. Um, we've also just let you know, we reached out to, um, a couple dozen architects and sent them an email inviting them to this event. Um, some architects slash contractors, um, hoping to get, again, input from as many people as possible. And, um, our, our goal is to, um, for the various bodies and of course the planning commission, um, to provide staff with direction and recommendations on how we can improve, um, the design review chapter of the Court of Madera municipal code. Um, in terms of policy, um, clarification of existing regulations and actual changes to the, the structure of the code. You know, they're just, um, structural things and formatting things that, that can be eas- easily changed, that will make our life easier and hopefully everyone's life easier. As you mentioned, Chairman Chase, there's no formal action to be taken place and we anticipate future planning commission meetings to discuss this. Um, we haven't set a date for meeting number two. We can talk about that at, at the end. Um, and, and in general, you know, is there, um, love to hear your opinion. Is, is there anyone's opinion? Is there something broken with the, the guidelines or are they, are they working okay? Um, is there something major that, that we missed? Of course, um, please let us know. And, um, again, this is a, a workshop and a discussion, um, with us. What Tracy and I would like to do is we're going to, we're going to go through a section. And then, and then have comments and questions and, and, and discussion with you all. And then wrap and then go to the next section. So rather than going through the whole thing at once and putting everybody to sleep, um, we'll do it section by section. So our next, my next slide is just kind of a background, overall background of design review. Your design review, I think, exists in all um, communities and all jurisdictions, certainly most. Um, and the purpose is to, um, a discretionary process that helps control the visual and physical character of a town. When, you know, when, when the physical, um, buildings change, um, whether the brand new buildings or modifications that could lead to the, the change in character of a town. So I think design review is, is an important thing. Uh, it helps to ensure that new development and the alteration of existing development meets the standards, uh, of lot coverage, floor area setbacks, height and so on. Now, so that's kind of the, the fundamental backbone of, of design review. And a little bit more, it's a, um, it's a public and transparent process that guides design, uh, to be consistent with our general plan and to be consistent with our zoning ordinance. And again, it looks at, it analyzes site context, grading, tree loss, um, drainage, um, environmental impacts, um, in various ways, size and bulk and, and massing of, of the building, architectural form, next year design, and of course, how it impacts the surrounding residents, um, and, and the overall town. Um, landscaping as well, we, but tree loss, but landscaping is certainly a factor as well also. And, uh, the focus on our staff, of our staff report is, um, based on our collective, many years of experience working with the design review code. Um, Adam's a veteran at, at eight years and me, I'm, I'm seven behind him and, and then Tracy and Martha, we've all worked in this code extensively. And, um, frustrated at times, um, but so this is an opportunity to, to improve it. Um, identify potential changes, clarify regulations, um, make, maybe make changes that are consistent with staff interpretations that we've been doing it this way, you know, for so many years. Let's, let's codify it and, and put it, put it in the code. And again, make it easier for, for applicants and the public to understand. And adjust, possibly adjust policies to, um, to address staff observations around certain types of, of construction activities that potentially should be subject to designer view. You know, things that are going on that, that just needed a building permit. So with, there's certainly opportunities to, to increase the use of designer view and opportunities to decrease the, the use of designer view. So with that, the next slide, well, with that, uh, opening up to questions or any comments on our first six slides. Overall, kind of big picture there on why we're here.
Thank you, Phil. Um, well, well, that's a good time to take a quick break here in the litany of issues. Uh, you guys are on the front lines of this, so you, you run into this daily. And so you really have the sense of what's important to change. And that's why you wrote such a detailed staff report about this to, uh, identify certain areas that can, uh, be helped by economizing or changing the direction of the, the design review requirements. So, um, I'm going to look over to my right here and see if you guys have any questions for staff or you want to heard something at this point. Daniel?
Uh, I, I don't know what's the right timing of this, but, uh, the, you know, if we're really looking at our, our design code, design review code, uh, what struck me as might be missing is, um, particular, uh, more specific guidelines for the major thoroughfares in town. Both for residents and for visitors, what they mostly experience every day is the experience of driving down Tam Vista or Tampa Pius or the major thoroughfares in town. And to exempt, uh, uh, certain improvements, particularly residential, I think the commercial and mixed use are already covered. But particularly the residential along those corridors and to, do we really want to think about uh, those corridors more holistically, not a project at a time, but what they should look like and feel like. So just putting that out there.
Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, congratulate the staff for taking this on. I think, uh, some of the suggestions, clarifications and recommendations are really perfect. So I want to hear more.
Margaret?
Uh, well, I agree with Bob. I, I wonder also, uh, just ve-.
Uh, just ve- very quickly, what what your process was, how did you, did you go piece by piece through the? Various uh. Codes and and regulations and how did you, how'd you go about it?
Um, yes, to your first statement, we did, we did kind of go through it piece by piece, we've also been. Since we've all been here, we've been taking notes and we've got a a file in in the shared drive. You know, areas to to fix the code and where where to fix the code and so um and then collectively just, you know, talking amongst the four of us. Identifying and and again, it and you're then Tracy and I just walking through it and identifying what areas we wanna improve.
I think one of the most important things to me is um the sentence to identify potential change uh changes. Blah blah blah, for applicants and the public to understand, just making it more user friendly. More straightforward rather than uh. Just more straightforward, succinct and more straightforward.
And I would just say there have been a couple of um at times in the past. There have been some questions around some particular projects that have raised sort of the discussion of designer view and how designer view works in the process. Uh, to the level of a discussion of town council meetings in the past, so we attached um one of the staff reports uh to. Uh this staff report, um and there's been a couple other instances where. Uh designer view has been discussed and 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 sort of aspects of it, so it's been an ongoing sort of. Not only staff keeping our notes and and sort of. About where things could be clarified or how we're interpreting things and why and and sort of knowing that we needed to do a holistic sort of. Look at uh designer view and how it, obviously it affects all sorts of different properties, commercial, residential. Um, all our uh mixed use districts, I mean throughout town, there are thresholds, so that's one of the big ones. Um, uh but i- it's been something that certainly. I'm very excited that we're here today and thanks to staff's work of just. Sticking to it and 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 it's not easy stuff, but I actually getting to this point where we're having this discussion. And after many years and and sort of hopefully we'll get to the point where we have some proposed amendments that can go through the process. With additional input from uh members of the public who are here, it's nice to see we have some people who want to comment on this um. And learn more about it, and again, there's, it's an opportunity to sort of hear from others about other aspects that have been on their minds as well, that should be adjusted, changed, so.
Anything to add Tracy?
Oh, I was gonna say that generally speaking, we we keep track of things that we struggle with on a daily basis in terms of. Um our code and then things that develop as issues um with applicants or neighbors um. For things that require only building permit and then um we also keep track of things that. Uh maybe we should be providing relief from some of the uncertainty of designer view for certain types of projects. Um, and then lastly, I think there are some things that we'll be discussing that really have been in in place for thirty years. And that's a long time, and we should probably be looking at those things and making sure that especially as it relates to how. In your consideration of any project, is it still helpful, or is there something else that we should be changing with respect to findings, for example?
Points, yeah, thank you, um so uh Phil, I think it's time to move into the next section then.
Right, well, we'll dive right in, I just wanted to add too, if there's something that's not clear, or you have a question that. Feel free to interrupt and ask that question or ask that clarification, um and the first sort of grouping of um. Um, issues that we want to talk about is related to the threshold for designer view in our residential zones. Um. And right now, our code um identifies when projects are exempt from designer view when it's not. Required for any given project and um. You know, in order to make the threshold for designer review review more clear and easier to understand for applicants. And the public um staff suggesting that we um instead set forth when a project is going to require. Design review, um it's much simpler to talk about design review thresholds with the public and with applicants if that. Um, plain language uh tells you when they don't need to stop with the planning department. Um, and I'm I'm put up here just a a shorter example of um how that would read. Um, and if you have your staff report, um it's the top of page five has um the entirety of the proposed text. That would set forth the types of construction activities for which design review is required, um. Um, and I can pull that up on the screen if you'd like to take a look at that, um. Let let me know, and also add that with what's at the top of page five on on your staff report, and again, I can pull that up if anybody wants to look. At all of it, um.
Everybody's got it.
There is a copy, there should be two copies of it there, in the binder is an additional copy. I'll pull it up in just a second, um. With um these changes, we're um being more clear and and breaking out the different construction activities that. Um would require design review, we're also making certain clarifications, um. For instance, our existing code talks about additions that are two hundred and fifty square feet in area, and we've consistently interpreted that to mean gross floor area. And you know, we feel that it's important to spell that out in the code, so that's that's one change. Um, that's a a nuance, um we're using round numbers and standard language, right now our existing design review threshold code says. Um, that. Sometimes additions must be less than a certain size or height, such as less than two hundred and fifty square feet and less than fifteen feet in height, and what that does to applicants is it makes them. Create additions that aren't round numbers, they're two hundred and forty nine square feet, or is what's the, is it fourteen feet, eleven inches? Is is that, that's that's more a more complicated number for applicants and the public to understand than than a round number such as two fifty and fifteen. Um, and then lastly, our design review regulations are are spread out within our six residential zoning districts. And if they're um the same, they could be grouped together under general provisions for residential zoning districts. Um, which would make it just easier for people to navigate uh and and find those regulations, um. Stop there if anybody has.
That's. On page five, that's where you continue with that aligned design review thresholds for all residential zones.
I can pull it.
Go ahead Jim.
So Tracy, are you thinking that um it's it's a general, uh it's in it's in one sp- one place, but when there's something specific, like we're we're gonna get to Christmas Tree Hill, you might have like a. A subpoint, like if you're if you're in Christmas Tree Hill, this would apply. Some of those were redundant, but there were some things that were definitely specific to that unique area of town.
Yeah, we'll we'll talk about that um later on. Um, as we kind of have a section about Christmas Tree Hill, their threshold is much lower. Than it is for R one and R one A, so it would need to be separated out into the overlay unless we've heard, and we will discuss this unless we were to align that. With um other designer view threshold. Um, in which case it would be, it would be the same, so not necessary to repeat it there.
And I I think if I could just add what what Tracy was saying, and I think you you hit it on the head Jim, is instead of currently you open the book. And if you you go to, you go to R one and it tells you what what's the threshold for designer view in R one. And then you open the, you go to R two and it tells you the the threshold for R two, we're proposing to put all that in. If if you have a residential piece of property, your thresholds are X.
Yeah.
And so just an an easier way to to organize the document.
Understand.
And and just, but also just backing up to what Tracy said in terms of. You know, we we our initial language, our existing language is kind of in the negative, your project is exempt if you do this. Um, I think it's much easier to say is, you know, you're, if if your project is this, you're required to do design review, if your project is is this small, you're not required to. Um, people come in all the time and say, I I want to add on to my house, but I don't want to go through designer view. Don't want to deal with planners or the planning commission, they don't say that, they don't say that, but I think that's what they're thinking.
And get away from you guys.
And um, and that's obviously that's legitimate, your question, uh the. Planning, the planning process is time and money as opposed to just doing the building process. And so it's good to have these things clear, okay, if your project is is two hundred and fifty square feet or more, you're going through designer view.
But specifically, when you speak about diner designer, are you also talking about a uh? The zoning administrator review, if it's in-house and staff review?
Yes, there's there's two, there's two levels of designer.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because that, when I was reading through this, like, some of the stuff I interpreted that you guys would be reviewing. As a staff level, but it would still have to be approved by the zoning administrator, and that's still considered designer view, correct?
The the zoning administrator and staff is the same thing, I think Adam, Adam has the title on his business card perhaps, but but we, you know. I, it's staff, we just call it staff level, so if you if you walk in the door and you want to do something to your house. Just use a house example, there there's three things, you, there's three processes you can go through, it's real small, you're just doing the building permit. It's medium size, you're doing staff level slash zoning administrator, design review. Which is, which is a fee of a a fee and a public notice, but no public hearing, not dealing with the planning commission. So that's, that's project number two, project number three is the big one, and that's, you're doing two thousand square feet or more. Or you're adding on a second story, a few other things, and then you're going in front of the um the planning commission.
I I guess uh my question is more about the the exemptions that we're talking about, are they exempt from? From zoning administrator review, or is it, are we, are they, you know, is it just going straight to building permit?
Straight to building, straight to building permit, they're exempt from design review process.
And our code doesn't speak to what level of designer view that you're going through, other than do you need it or do not need it? Um, it it in the residential section, um that is by policy, um and um. It's it's part of how we look at a project, i- as it, when it first comes to our attention, doesn't need designer view at all, and then at which level and um. Bill spoke to that a little bit, I'll.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and just to be clear, the designer view process is the discretionary process where the findings need to be made, if you're exempt from that. It doesn't mean that planner, planners will still look at the, just to make sure it meets all the development standards. And that all those check out and that we're doing a review, but it's during essentially the building permit application phase when we do our review. So the building permit comes in, we've already verified they don't need designer view, the discretionary process, they're in building permit. Building department will route it to all the various different departments. And planning staff will then do a review and make sure that it meets the code requirements, doesn't have a need for some other. You know, it's possible that when the building permit comes in and they say, oh, we're two fifty six. We would catch that and say, oh, actually, no, this does require designer, you know, two hundred and fifty six square feet of an addition or something, I should say.
I mean, it might be ha- also from a design professional's perspective to know. Those three different levels and what's trick, what triggers it, because if it doesn't have to go to a public hearing, it definitely changes, you know, it. It saves a ton of time and money.
Sure, I will say the code right now always allows the planning director the discretion to kick something up to the planning commission if. The co- I think the specific language is like public con.
There's a significant policy question or public controversy. We may actually take what ordinarily sometimes might be a minor designer view, go ahead and take that to the planning commission.
Minor designer view, that was what I was thinking of, anyway.
Alright, thank you, Bob.
Uh, I just wanted to ask, would this be a good point to eliminate hedges from this? I mean, you know, that that seems like uh uh something that uh. Uh you wouldn't want to try to continue to monitor and maybe we should just eliminate hedges. Otherwise, I support all of, all of the uh proposals.
We we can cer- we can certainly talk about hedges and walls and fences when we get to that, that part of the discussion, it's in the in the staff report.
We have seen some benefits to being able to regulate hedges and then sometimes we, and you. Like those hedges to be a lot taller than what strictly is allowed by code for screening purposes, so it is something that, yeah. We should talk about.
I I strongly support the idea of putting something in in the positive rather than the negative, I think that's. Terrific.
I think that goes without saying, right, across the board here.
Yeah, I I agree with that, uh more of an umbrella question, um because these guidelines have been here for a long time. Uh, and with the depth of experience staff has in reviewing uh projects, um. Uh, do you think the the size, height, uh and other kinds of very specific. Uh requirement, would you think of ever, do you, are they working, and do you think that we should be looking at any changes there?
That one, if I can, just because I I think that we're that. We did discuss this in two thousand nineteen with the town council when the specific. Addition size was basically discussed as whether or not two hundred and fifty square feet was an appropriate threshold, and at the time. I argued that it 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 was working, and we shouldn't monkey around with it, um. Just because we we essentially, I think, in the report talked about about forty projects, forty residential additions that were less. Than two hundred and fifty square feet in floor area, um only a couple of them really created some of the concerns. About privacy and view impacts and whatnot that you oftentimes see come up with residential additions. Uh, there, the height, I think similarly is is uh working okay, I think the challenge is you just. Um, well, I would just say, yeah, i- it seems to be working okay, and and so therefore, once you start to change it, you open up. Really, um, a lot of potential other questions and you're sort of in a land of a little bit of uncertainty. Um, and we did compare our thresholds with other Marin County jurisdictions and sort of felt like we were in the right. Around the right um size, we haven't gotten, I don't know, you can speak to maybe if if we've had public comment on, are we too restrictive or? Too too much of a a burden, I mean, we are cognizant that it is. It is a process, it's time, it's energy, it's money, uh for sometimes, you know, applicants can think that it's. Extra mu- uh uh extra challenge to go through the process, but I think we've just felt generally, it's not worth the energy and effort and. Potential headache to to go and and monkey around with those those thresholds that we've had for many years.
Okay, thanks. I I just wanted to just tag on that real. If it was okay, I, I mean, I would, I I I think it, you can't even add up a two car garage at two fifty square feet. You know, I, I have complete confidence in the staff to do something if you if you guys decide to increase that a little bit to. Accommodate a little bit more square footage, um if you just look at just a standard master bedroom suite, you're talking four to five hundred square feet. Um, and these are typical really like uh easy things to. If they, if it was, if it was fifteen feet and on a single story, that could be an an opportunity to. Keep things in the house and and not bring everything to commission, and then you would always have the opportunity to kick it, kick it up to designer if you felt like it was gonna. Cause some issues.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, just to clarify, we're talking about whether, not necessarily whether it's staff or not, um. It's whether it even requires a discretionary review process with the planning. Uh through the the planning code, the zoning code, so again, it's like. Whether or not it's staff level or commission is a sort of a different question, and we have sort of internal policies around that. Um, again, there's discretion to kick it to the planning commission if we choose, um or the planning director chooses, but. We're talking about just the threshold for whether or not you're going to building permit or into a planning entitlement. And and that's the two hundred and fifty square feet right now, but to that point, I think. We have had conversations in the past, dude, could we allow a little bit more, still fifteen feet height, but lower and maybe a little bit more. Square footage, square footage, it means the standards do, so I I think that's, is that what you were referring to? It means the standards do, so I, I think that's, is that what you were referring to, whether or not something up to a certain
somebody that's not changing the architecture of the building, it's the same style, they're, they're just, it's a hip roof, going to hip roof, uh, you know, it's um, in the back of, you know. And it's within the building envelope and, and below the threshold of fifteen feet and one story.
And you're right, and just, just to give a little more context, you know, a staff level of design review is um, little over a thousand dollars. And of a fee, and I usually tell people to, you know, it's about four, four to six weeks. It can be very, it can be pretty quick. Um, unfortunately, and we just saw it in this last item, um, usually people are scared of notifying their neighbors. And if you go through designer view, we send out a notice, whether it's staff level or planning commission. And so unfortunately, people say, what, what can I do? And I don't have to notify my neighbors. Um, it not, doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes it does. And so that's um, that's another factor. But, but staff level design view can be, can be pretty, pretty quick.
Have you considered naming it something else differentiated? No, it's confusing, you know.
It's gonna call it the gauntlet.
Staff level. Interview, the name of designer view or staff level?
Yeah, just have the different levels of review with different names. Because just listening to this past conversation, I mean, which level are they talking about that? You know, it's a little confusing. What we do here, when we look at a project, that's called what?
A major design review.
Major design review.
To it and, and minor, meaning more minor in nature, would stay and, and be analyzed by staff and findings would be.
So maybe you wanna call that an analysis, design analysis or?
Well, it is, it is important to mention that you, you're, you're making the same findings as I'm making. If I'm doing it by my, just as a staff person. It's staff level, I have to make the exact same findings that you have to make. And so we're doing the same, we're doing the same job. But we're making, we're making the same decision that you're making decisions on bigger projects than we are.
I agree, but when you're reading about it, it's confusing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll note that. Um, name change.
I want to interject that, um, you know, the meeting will go till ten o'clock. We'll have a choice to go beyond that if we so choose. Um, we have um, two uh, fine design professionals here in the room. And that um, we've got one online, uh, Mr. Pearlstein and a unidentified restaurant. So that said, um, I would like to hear from the uh, design professionals in the room at this point, if you care to speak at all and interject your commentary, because it's time. Or would you, if you'd step up to the microphone too? Yeah.
You can bring the microphone.
Oh, I was thinking, I thought of workshop, I'm sorry, I thought it was a lot. Not quite in the um, anyway, so my thoughts on the design re, reprocess was more that we want to make sure it's, doesn't seem arbitrary and capricious to armed owners. And I think there's an overemphasized, my, from my point of view as a design professional, in fitting in with existing neighborhoods. When my existing neighborhood was the affordable housing of its day. And I don't think it's well-designed. I don't think the houses are beautiful. They're not like the brownstones of Brooklyn or the Victorians of San Francisco. I think perhaps a little less emphasis on fitting in and maybe exploring, advancing design brilliance in our, in our town would be nice. Um, I think we're looking for density because how, I bought my house. We bought our house, it was under four hundred thousand dollars. The houses in my neighborhood are worth over million and a half. People want nine stories, nine-foot ceilings, they want master bedrooms, they want amenities. Um, commiserate with the price of what they're paying for. I think we need to give them some more leeway to go high, because we want to keep our open space open. Want to keep our yards. And I think in my neighborhood, there's also, always seems to be like the tall buildings are like hunkering down to pretend they're not tall. Um, and I don't think that's beautiful. My two cents. Um, obviously, there's a lot of emphasis on privacy. And as you spoke tonight, privacy is hard to define because of noise. And if that limits, I'm very interested in cross ventilation, so we don't have to have AC going all the time. Sometimes that means windows on side yards. That's important. And maybe spelling out notification, when we send out notifications, what, what we're allowing or, or inviting neighborhoods to, neighbors to comment on. I think when you get a notification, seems too open-ended and you tend to um, as we're afraid of kicking the hornet's nest of waking up your neighbors. And if you were to say, well, meets all these and we're really only asking you to comment on defining what they can comment on, I think that might make it a little less scary too. That's it so far.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening, I'm Dan Phipps, I'm resident up on Chapman, and I've done a couple of projects in San Francisco, I mean, in Corte de Madera, I've done a couple of projects in San Francisco, yes. But uh, in, in Corte de Madera, and I want to commend the department for what they do do already. Uh, and I commend this group now to try to move it forward a little more to make it even more clear to people, because it's one of the things as a design professional, when you come into a situation, you want to be able to get something that design, a design that meets your clients' needs and meets the, the requirements of the area you're building in. So you want to have context, you want to make sure it, you know, fits the site, fits the program for the people, but also meets the, again, the, the requirements. And so when you make things more clear to the public, there's, there can be no downside to that. I see nothing wrong with that. I think there's nothing but good things that come from that. Uh, I think it's that, you know, you can't, I, I don't know about the, I, I think you said something about two hundred and fifty square feet, that's not an addition. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a little uh, shed on, onto a building. I mean, and, and maybe that's a good thing, because there are privacy issues that I, I find. You know, the, the windows, I love that, that this community, at least especially where I live. Uh, all the houses around me uh, have a sense of privacy that is bar nuns uh, in a dense area. It's not that dense, but it's dense enough area, because my house looks this way, the other house looks that way, and the other house looks this way, and the other one that way. And we all are around each other, but we don't know we are, are on top of each other. And it's really wonderful. And I think there's some, the things get worked out in here that, that you, I commend you all to doing that. So I think it's a great thing what you're doing. I don't have any specific ideas that uh, I can add at this point in time, but I want to listen more. And maybe there will be something that comes up in the future. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pitt. Um, Richard Pearlstein's got his hand up, that's great.
Hang on, I. Right, Richie should be able to unmute yourself.
There, I, I should be unmuted now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. First, I want to, um, I, I, I want to add on to what Dan just mentioned about the current staff and current commission, specifically to the first item that you folks listened to earlier tonight. I chose to listen into it, and it just reconfirmed for me that this particular commission, and it's been this way for a while, you guys are really good at what you do, so I commend you for that. Then I'll also um, add on to, excuse me, my neighbor Jan's comments about um, many of the neighborhoods, including ours, that were kind of the starting neighborhoods sixty years ago when they were built. But these days, they are, they're much higher priced. And there is a thing about, and the language shows up about fitting in or neighborhood conformance, or whatever the language may be. And I have this discussion with my partner periodically about, are we trying to blend in, or are we just trying to do great design? And so I'm wondering if there might be some way of working the language more towards great design or design excellence. And that may well mean that, for instance, if you have a whole series of craftsmen, craftsmen-esque, excuse me, craftsmen-esque homes built fifty years ago, that maybe you don't have to necessarily do a bigger craftsman, maybe there's something else. And I think there's a balance point there, because you don't want something that is, well, it's a slippery slope. I'll leave that for you to just, uh, to talk about. The last thing I comment on is the two hundred and fifty square foot threshold. Um, fifteen feet or under in height. It's great that people have this pathway to avoid the whole design review process, because believe me, two oh one, our clients generally would prefer not to be going through design review, but they realize it's a necessary thing. So I wonder if for fifteen feet or under in height, if that two hundred and fifty square feet, feet could grow. Because if you're concerned about privacy and maximum ridge height and casting shadows, I could see maybe a larger footprint, it's still not affecting your neighbors. Those are my comments so far, thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Unnamed resident is not putting their hand up. Um, you have no emails, do you Tracy, coming in?
No emails.
Okay. All right, so we sort of hit a uh, point in your presentation there, and um, I think we were, we got to uh, design review and residential uh, and aligning design review for all residential zones. And um, I think your next area was uh, threshold for designer review, Christmas Tree Hill, or is that where you want to pick up? Where would you like to go next?
I think I stated before that the threshold for designer views is listed separately in each of our six residential zone. Um, regulations on R one, and R one is medium density residential, R one A, low density residential. They're the same. They, they read as you can see on the screen. You don't need designer view if your addition is less than fifteen feet in height, and it's also less than less than two hundred and fifty square feet in area. Um, just to repeat that for those listening, I didn't have my mic on. In R one and R one A, the threshold for designer view um, is the same. It reads that additions to structures less than fifteen feet height are exempt. That addition must also be less than two hundred and fifty square feet in area in order to be, avoid designer view. Other um, let me back up. Why are they, they are different. The word or used to be contained in the R one and R one A zone, and it in, it was removed when um, the town adopted FAR standards. Um, I reviewed those staff reports. Meeting minutes, workshop minutes, and there's no discussion of why they move, remove that one word, or. Um, I couldn't locate the reason why. Uh, but clearly, they're looking to clarify that you have to check both those boxes off in order to avoid designer view. It's got to be less than fifteen, it's got to be less than two fifty. And compared to other residential, single-family zones, that's um, R one B and R one C and multifamily, which is R two and R three. Their exemption from designer view reads slightly different. And a strict read of this code means that the project does not need design review if it's less than fifteen feet in height. It also doesn't need design review if it's less than two hundred and fifty square feet. So that means you could have an addition that's three thousand square feet, and you don't need designer view, because it's not also more than fifteen feet in height. I'm gonna pause there if that made no sense to anyone, I can re-explain. But because, if you read, um, I'll read from the staff report really quickly. So what it, uh, strict read means that with the and/or clause, a project that is less than two hundred and fifty square feet and less than fifteen feet in height is exempt. That matches R one and R one A. It also means that a project that's less than two hundred and fifty square feet, but it's more than fifteen feet in height, that's exempt. And it also means that a project that is more than two hundred and fifty square feet, but it still is less than fifteen feet in height, still exempt. And we want to needless to say, because of that last bullet there with the arrow next to it, um, staff has some concerns. Um, and there's an opportunity to correct this, um, and to make each residential zone remove or from each, each of the residential zones so that they, they read the same. Um, we have consistently been conservative in our consideration of whether a, a project needs design review in the other zones in, in the ones that say and/or. Because we, we think the at the time, Flora was not adopted in our, was only adopted for R one and R one A and not the rest of the zones, so um, we think the intent was to make that change in all the zones, it just, it wasn't done. Um, and we've, we've consistently been treating it as if it, if it says and.
So that then, have you guys bumped into anyone trying to do this?
We have been very lucky.
Because, because no one's, right, because we've always we've always dropped. Go, go quick. We haven't, because we've always, we've always dropped the or, and we've always told a person sorry, you're, you're going, you're going, you're going to designer view, even if you're doing that three thousand square feet and less than fifteen. So we just want to cod, um, codify what we've been doing.
Good.
Yeah, we, we want to correct that.
Well, that's all right, the commission would shut them down. Yeah, it's going, no, don't say that, right?
R one B and R one.
So that, that's very clear, a no-brainer, but I assume this language would also be changed around consistent with what we just talked about earlier, where we're not, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Clear.
Next one, um, our R one B and R one C. Um, so one of, this is another inconsistency that staffs identified and, and we're seeking commission feedback on and um, each residential zone has a, a threshold at, at that number, two hundred and fifty square feet, except for R one B. R one B is a threshold of, of five hundred square feet, and, and staff can only assume the threshold for R one B lots is higher than that for other districts, because R one B lots are much larger in size than R one and R one A. I talk about this in the staff court, the minimum lot size in R one B is an acre. R one B is that darker kind of green? Uh, it, it, that's an acre, minimum lot size. But in uh, in R one A, it's half that, twenty thousand square feet. Now, R one, it's even less, it's seventy-five hundred square feet. So R one B is much bigger, much big, greater setbacks. I can see why, or staff can see why the threshold would be five hundred square feet for those very large lots. But then you look at R one C. Um, it's not clear why R one C would not have a similar threshold, threshold to R one B. R one C is also characterized by large lots. The minimum lot size in R one C is five acres. And the setback requirements exceed those of R one B. So what we're asking the commission is, is should both, both of them be five hundred square feet? And the, the R one C lots are um, the little darker green that you can see here um, on the bottom of the slide.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, next slide. Okay, um, Christmas Tree Hill thresholds, so Christmas Tree Hill, as um, I think most people know, is, is a unique area, um, a special area of town. There are special regulations were adopted back in nineteen ninety-four. Um, resulting, as a result of community members and people living on Christmas Tree Hill and, and the Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers Association. Um, which existed when Adam and I started, but I think they are officially defunct now. Um, so Christmas Tree Hill is, is clearly a unique area. And with that said, we've had residents of Chapman Park, um, which is going up Chapman, where Mr. Phipps lives, um, expressed, expressed some interest, like, we want to be special like Christmas Tree Hill. There's so many words. Um, and so the purpose of the overlay, so there's a Christmas Tree Hill overlay, there's no Chapman Park overlay. And the purpose of the overlay is to implement the Christmas Tree Hill Community Plan, which was created many, many years ago, and provide development guidelines to preserve the unique character of Christmas Tree Hill. Um, the environmental and scenic qualities, clearly, you know, very steep um, roads, um, homes right, right against the street. And protect the health and safety of persons, you know, on hill and, and property on the hill. Um, so that's why the Christmas Hill guidelines exist and um, and have, have some special, and have special, unique findings as well. Um, just dealing with the um, the guidelines and the thresholds um, to start. Um, we, we, we'll talk about the findings later. There are approximately two hundred and eighty-five residents. There you go. I already went there. Nevermind. Sorry. I'm one slide behind. There you go. Our proposed changes are to increase the the threshold. Right now, if you do an addition of more than a hundred square feet, you have to go through designer view. We're proposing to bump that up to two fifty. Sounds like from our previous discussion, may want to bump that up even more, but we'll we'll just go from from one fifty to two fifty is what we're posing now. Change the threshold to accessory structures from fifty square feet and less than six feet in height to a hundred and twenty square feet and ten feet in height. And then and we we just mentioned, if if we decide to go down this road and make these changes, we may want to consider notifying the folks at Christmas tree hill, let them know that we should get their get their feedback on how they feel about this change. So.
You know, we just add, yeah, just real quick. I mean, this is I think before we say we want to propose these changes, we we would want to make sure that we are doing some real outreach up there. I mean, so the the more restrictive thresholds that would require designer view in this history hill, a hundred square foot addition, the smaller decks of things like that were at the request essentially of the community at the time when those were implemented in nineteen ninety four, ninety five around there. So you know, it there have been some, and this goes back again to when we discussed this in two thousand nineteen, at that time, at least some members of Christmas tree hill thought that it would be appropriate to treat. They don't want to be special anymore. I wanted to be more like the rest of the community and have the same thresholds for design review. We heard that from a couple residents at the time. So that's really what the discussion is around Christmas tree hill is. Well, should we do that? Should we move to make, you know, reduce the restrictive nature or tweak it not maybe not as entirely the same as the rest of the town and R one and R one A districts. But maybe there's some some of the regulations could go back from being or or be more aligned with the rest of quarter of a day in terms of those thresholds for that require design review. So that was, I do think there there's a legitimate question there. I think it is one that Phil mentioned would require certain outreach efforts specifically to members of the community along the coast of street hill and get some things on that. Obviously, that would just mean less projects would go through a discretionary review process on the hill. But it is, I think it is worth considering. And and I think there are some good information in the staff report about how many projects.
Yeah, they since two thousand sixteen, there's been thirty three designer view permits on Christmas tree hill. And of those, five of them would have been exempt if we only applied existing designer view threshold to them, the two hundred and fifty square foot threshold. So if you if you're looking at attachment six, that what that is, is that's a list of those projects that only needed design review because of the lower threshold on Christmas tree hill. They mostly consist of there's a twenty six square foot of additional floor area. Only one of them really approaches a large addition. That's that's the second one listed with, which was a ground level addition of two hundred and forty seven square feet. The rest are very small additions and one example shown at the bottom of the slide, which is two storage sheds that that were seventeen square foot each and they happened to be more than six feet in height. So we took it through a designer view. Some of these relatively minor projects, you know, invite additional neighborhood scrutiny and additional time and and costs. And you know, maybe, maybe the commission wants to direct staff to, like Adam said, tweak that to allow for some of these minor projects to occur without a discretionary review.
Dr. Bundy, you are wanting to speak.
You know, I would support making it the same throughout the R one districts and and just the consistency of it really makes a lot of sense. I realize you do want to do outreach to Christmas tree hill, but I would support those changes.
Do these changes are only these changes required to make it consistent with the other R one districts?
Uh, yes, other than there's a nuance of threshold for designer view on Christmas tree hill that says that it must also not include a deck or a window.
Right.
In order to be exempt. So you're, you have to, you have to tick all of these boxes in order to be exempt. You got to be no greater than a hundred square feet in area. You've got to be no more than fifteen feet in height and it can't include a window and it can't include a deck.
And just to be consistent with other neighborhoods, why wouldn't we add, delete those things? So that other neighborhoods, which have very similar situations, steep terrain and and other design considerations that are are not being treated the same way.
If if the commission order direct us to, you know, adjust the threshold for designing to increase it for Christmas tree hill, I think that we would probably bring that to you to allow people to have their additions include a window and include a deck. You know, so long as that deck doesn't otherwise trigger designer view, for example, the height of it lots of decks on Christmas tree hill, we've been capturing, not because of that provision, but because they're so tall.
Okay, thanks.
I I just had a general question about the association and some of the design guidelines. Is is there an actual association that has to sign off on it for for to to come in in front of you guys for your design review?
Christmas tree hill? No, there there used, there used to be the hill dwellers association, they used to get they used to get a chance to look at the projects as well. And we we sent it to public works, we send it to fire and we send it to the hill dwellers. And they would give give us their two cents.
And you just take their feedback and
Yeah, and we and we present it to you. Here here's a project. We think it it meets all findings and here's what the hill dwellers have said about it.
Okay, great, thanks.
So I'm thinking that there there are other things particular to Christmas tree hill regulations, aren't there? Like the SCU, ADU.
Yes.
Regulations too. Because when something came up, I don't know, maybe it was last year and and you talked about Christmas tree hill and some association that needed to approve something. Maybe it was with the SC, the ADUs. Not STU. It's the state dispersment unit. Or regulate child support. It's ADUs. You tried to get in touch with some kind of hill dwellers association or so and and you couldn't even find anybody.
Right.
So it seems to me they really don't have an association anymore.
Yeah, there there used to be three or four people that reviewed projects and then kind of slowly they lost interest. And it was down to, I believe, one or two people and we got a formal letter saying that they were no longer.
I just have a feeling that given the the specialness of the area, as soon as you do change it, there'll be complaints.
I I think also what you're referring to was the the concern that the Christmas tree folk, Christmas tree hill folks, not any particular association, but the whole group about ADUs and, you know, increasing the population of Christmas tree hill via ADUs. And that's, I think that's the kind of the last.
And and that would not change as part of these.
That wouldn't have anything.
What we're talking about too is really, we would say that that gray area that that additions from one hundred to two fifty are the ones that we would not be taking through designer view. So if we change it to two fifty, then we capture those and we haven't seen a great deal of those types of applications. There was one that's two hundred and forty seven square feet. In out of the thirty three and one that was a hundred and twenty square feet out of the thirty three that we've done since two thousand sixteen. So you know, we haven't, we haven't seen that 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 sort of middle area of of additions up there.
I think I think the consistency would be the better way to go.
Great.
Okay, now I would even support the deck and the windows as well. I mean, it's it's a new process, but you're going to review it. I mean, I I should say if it's exempt, it's exempt in in all neighborhoods and to keep it consistent.
Yeah, you can't do much up there without a so, yeah, I would agree that this needs to be consistent throughout the R one and R one A areas.
Okay, ready to move on to non-residential? Otherwise known as commercial. Commercial or 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 office. Public, thank you, yes. And non non-residential is 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 a better word than than non-residential means a lot of things. So designer view thresholds for non-residential properties. So currently for non-residential properties, any exterior modification of structures or site gets to go through designer view. Has anybody been to Bermetown lately? Restaurant? That restaurant got a had a paint job and they, we took them through designer view. They still invite, let allow us to use the restaurant. But so they, so that's something we'd we'd like to change. We think we think painting painting the exterior, you know, changing the window on the exterior of a non-residential property is a little extreme. And so we would like, we were are throwing out the idea of revising it closer to our MX one thresholds, which is our mixed use properties down on Tamil Vista. And say something along the lines of designer view is required for new or significant replacement of exterior elements, structures, amenities, site features or landscaping. And design review is required for additions of new floor area or new structures.
Great.
Well, what would happen if they wanted to paint it, you know?
Pink.
Purple. Well, that's pretty
Purple.
Well, it's pretty close to a residential area too, you know, and and
That's a good point.
Well, yeah, and I that could have been the intent behind that initially. We don't know again exactly what the drafters of the existing regulations were thinking. Currently, residential homes, for example, though, we do not regulate paint color or somebody could have a pink house today if they wanted to. But you're right, it's, these are more public buildings in terms of they're usually along, I think to Commissioner Kenny's point, they are usually more visible from public thoroughfares. Where they're located where they are. And so there, you know, this is really just a decision, a discussion point. I think some of the examples that have come up in the past are we've had people want to replace hair trees that are with have fire blight with Chinese aesthetic. That's, you know, we're sort of brought into the sister situation. Is that a is that an exterior modification of the site? Are are they in the same location? Are they a little bit different or any sort of like somebody wants to put, you know, new concrete, you know, change some of the landscaping features outside. So paint color, maybe, you know, we could, that's certainly something that you could call out from from those sorts of changes. But the idea was that we sort of need to get to a point where there's a little bit more flexibility. If a commercial property owner wants to do improvements that are not really adding floor area, but are just trying to make the place look nicer. Without necessarily, and there may be instances where we want designer view. But where some of these changes aren't even visible from the street, they're behind in the back of the lot. You know, something like that, but technically we'd be required to pull into design. So we're trying to figure out what what, where is the to draw the appropriate line in terms of allowing some flexibility, but also keep it in mind, there are there are appropriate times to design review on certain types of projects that are where there's relatively, could be relatively.
Or an an office building needs to, wants to make their their front door ADA accessible. So they've got to get rid of the stairs, build a ramp that's, you know, highly visible and landscape.
Right.
Landscape it. That happened over by Bank of America next door. So that's, that requires designer view. Again, it could be staff level. It would be staff level. If they came in tomorrow, if you staff level, we'd look at it and it would be, it would be quavered. But if 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 they said we're going to paint it bright purple, you know, we wouldn't, we would, yes, we
We've got two different problems. You've got the issue of design review and then you've got subjective review, right? So
Right.
If it's, if it's simply design review for paint color, that's fine. You can say, yes, you submitted a paint color and you know, where does it fall in subjective review? It's a, it's a problem to separate the two somehow.
It will, you'd 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 run it through the same findings that unless we change the findings for commercial.
Okay.
But you'd run it through the same findings and you try to find some where to latch on to the paint. We haven't gone through that example yet. Unfortunately, I haven't had to deal with that necessarily, but but that's how you do it. You'd run it through the findings. It could make all the findings except one that for whatever reason, the paint is is not harmonious or something.
And you look like you want to say something.
I'm just not clear. Can in in these non-residential zones, do we have a review of paint colors?
We we have and then some that are sort of similar palette, I would call it, or like it's still earth tone and it's just going from, we've made the call like we're not going to review it frankly. So that's how we've handled those because it was was like going from olive green to a sort of a beige green.
Was either Martha or Tracy, I can't remember who did it. Was Bermetown just the paint or were they changing paint indoors?
It was just the paint. They painted the doors a different color, but there are no other changes beyond the paint colors.
That's an improvement, right?
It wasn't.
Okay.
One thing, I don't know if other planners would agree, but you could address that in the little eye as newer significant replacements, new or significant replacement of exterior element structures, amenities, site features, landscape, colors, so that if somebody's doing something significant that we would want to make sure you can make findings on.
Significant color.
That's fine, but I think we we do have to get to a point where we're a little bit. I mean, I think the prior version, as I said, so as determined by the planning director, that could at least give you know, it's it's not when we put the standards in place like two hundred and fifty square feet or something, you want a bright line for the most part. This one, we're trying to figure out how to allow, again, allow some flexibility, but but it's not easy to call out every single thing that could be appropriate to be able to change without designer view. And so this was a little bit more mushy, but if you add in something like as determined by the planning director, give the planning director some discretion to make the call. Then it could work. Even though for an applicant, it would sort of be not clear initially unless you had that conversation with the Adam, could we fit, could we do do a little research on how other towns are handling the color and the finishes of this? Maybe, I mean, that might be a better way to kind of look at this because I I could see this. This is a tough one. Yeah, I agree. That's a good idea.
I know soul soul food in Centerfell went through quite a experience. If you've ever been to soul food, they're very bright green. And they
People love it.
Yep.
At least the young people love it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't actually don't mind it there, but I, you know, I'm sure that someone had to review it.
Yep.
And you had something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, it's the word significant. I have a problem with without a better definition of that.
I lived in a town years ago that had a main street and they had a design review committee. And they they spent a lot of money designing a paint scheme for the front of a building. They approved it. The town went into uproar. So and it took years for people to get used to what was then the true rainbow colors, not the rainbow flag that we but it was true rainbow colors and that it was well curated to be the right colors, but it rubbed everybody the wrong way. And it was, it was a design review process that it went through. So it can bite you in the butt, I think, frankly. Unless there are some guidelines and how to get there is the question, you know, what do you, where do you draw the line? Frankly, uh unless there are some guidelines and how to get there is the question, you know, what do you, where do you draw the line?
Mm hmm. And and right close to home, Adam had the experience of getting rid of the uh Tam Ridge orange. And with the Tam the Tam Ridge facing the freeway, that was a major. A major paint color, building color.
I forgot about that until.
I I still have an orange chip on my desk. Yep.
I have a one more question about the commercial uh district. We have a, I mean, I guess this maybe Phil could answer this best because you handle all the signage on on town center and. And uh the village. Now, we have a a signage program that's been pre-approved prior.
Yes, for the. Freeway facing signs, yes.
All freeway.
The village.
And so I've 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 seen it in towns where if it's pre-approved already and the planning commission's already reviews the size and the scale and this and that, that. It's sort of, you know, that. It's it's the company's branding. I mean, you're not gonna change someone's colors.
Right.
Of a Starbucks or a Tesla or whatever. I'm just wondering why it comes back to planning commission if it's already been. Free.
So free freeway signs on the village do not come to the planning commission if they're meeting the rules. We we had, we had one set of rules. And then they proposed to loosen them. It came to the planning commission. They agreed them and now they're they're looser. There's more fonts. There's more colors. Than there was ten years ago. Um so that's.
Yeah.
If if you do it, if you do it correctly, if you do it per the new guidelines, it's just a building permit at the village. Um the town.
But it's only facing a freeway, so.
So that, yeah, that's one category. The second, the second category are signs at the village that face uh the parking lot. Or visible from the freeway. So if you're on F year, if you're on the Cheesecake Factory. You you can see that from the east parking lot. You can see that from the east uh from the road. So that's going through design review. Um if you're an interior sign in the village. It's just a building permit. And then the town center has specific rules as well. And then added to that, when we go back to Bermetown, um old Quarter Madera Square is a very, very old. Design review guidelines just for old Quarter Madera Square, more or less, and says. You know, I can't remember, you know, just more, there there's, there's, you know, um. Design guidelines for old Quarter Madera Square regarding signs and buildings.
Yeah, I I guess I just wanted some feedback from the other commissioners on, you know, if you have. A a pre-existing program that's been adopted and been hashed out through planning commission on scale and. You know, you're not really changing the colors of someone's branding on their business, especially big box. You're not gonna change Rite Aid sign. Font or anything like that. Unless we are. But if it's already been pre-approved and and then the mall has. Given them, you know, given their sign off on it, does it does it need to come back to planning commission? You've already got a program, a general.
Yeah.
Or a master program in play.
Yeah, it does not, it does not come to planning commission if they're meeting the master sign program for the shopping.
Only if they're facing residential, because I was just, because we did the Rite Aid, right?
Yeah, you saw the the town center signs uh because they have uh. Design guidelines, which include signage guidelines, but you haven't seen those, the updated version of those. They have not elected to bring that to you. And so if they're gonna be proposing a sign, it it doesn't meet this the the sign program that the planning that the town has approved. So it needs to come to you. And so they're they're kind of. That affects their tenants because their tenants need to spend the time and money to come to the planning commission. So we. We are sometimes pressuring the town center to, you know. Bring their um design guidelines back to the commission so that those tenants that are facing the parking lot don't, you know, if they if they meet a master sign program.
So that Rite Aid that we did a few months ago was not meeting the. The guidelines.
I think you've seen Rite Aid, just food for dogs, the carbon health. And and it meets their sign guidelines, but you have not approved those sign guidelines, so it needs each individual application.
So they haven't brought them out. I guess what I'm saying, I I thought we had approved something prior to my joining the commission. That there was a master.
You did, but not what they're using today.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
Dr. Bundy. Yeah, I just want to agree with uh Jim from the standpoint of uh these national brands. Uh, you know, we always, even though we don't like them, I remember Sephora. Uh, I thought, you know, that color scheme on Sephora looks terrible in comparison to what was there before, but that was their brand. We went ahead and allowed it. Uh, these are not national brands, Bermetown, but they're local. They should, you know, be able to decide, you know, what paint scheme is gonna look right. If they really pick a bad one, they hurt their business. Uh but I I think we should as much as possible try to get out of the business of. Uh overseeing and regulating that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm very interested in getting to uh floodplain with Dr. Bundy here.
Casey, who lives in the floodplain, will be dealing with, will be addressing the floodplain issue.
Right.
We have uh five minutes to ten to ten or four minutes to ten to ten. At which point we'll give the ten-minute warning.
Okay. Um, the town's uh flood damage protection chapter, it's it's sixteen point one oh. The municipal code and and our designer view chapter do not have specific really regulations, designer view thresholds. Uh for applicants that that seek to raise um the finished floor of the the home, I mean, according with our regulations and FEMA regulations. Um and so projects that seek to raise the home uh often are required to obtain a designer view permit because. The project results in the overall height of the home um. Exceeding that fifteen feet in in height, even if no new floor area is added um to the structure. And as we've discussed, the designer view process can introduce uncertainty in time and cost for these individuals that. Um and and that could conflict with the town's policies related to assisting residents to protect their homes from flood damage. Um just to give uh an example of a a couple types of projects. The two types of of projects that the town sees um related to raising a home. Um the first one is um an app- application and often includes an addition and and a significant remodel, which is classified as a substantial improvement. By the floodplain administrator. Um a substantial improvement means that the cost of construction of the project equals or exceeds. The value of the existing structure. Um and like I said, it typically involves a large addition and remodel um to reach that substantial um improvement threshold. Um and those. And and that significant addition to remodel means that it needs design review for other reasons, not just for the FEMA lift and and. On this slide's an example of one of those projects that, sure, after it was raised, it exceeded fifteen feet in height, but it also had a seven hundred and thirteen. Square foot, single-story addition, and so it needed design review no matter what. Um and you have another type of application, and and this is really what we're talking about is is projects that only involve a FEMA lift. Um, this is an example of a project um over on Golden Hind that. The house went was lifted um two feet to one foot above base flood elevation. Um and it only included changes to doors and landings and stairs that are necessary as part of the project. There was no new floor area and it it needed design review um because the modified home was over fifteen feet in height. Um and since since two thousand and sixteen, the town has had twelve residential designer view applications that included a FEMA lift. Um and six of those, half of them um were just the left alone with no no new floor area. Um and so that's really the the question or the discussion point for the commission is. Um, you know, do we want to provide some sort of relief from designer view for those types of applications that are solely lifting the home? Um and then staff has um kind of talked about, do we want to also allow um? Additions of new floor area with a FEMA lift that that wouldn't otherwise trigger a design review as an example, a a. A two hundred square foot addition. Wouldn't require a designer view, except for the fact they're lifting it, and now that that addition's over fifteen feet in height and that's. Um on the screen, you'll see sort of an example of um maybe what. The direction we could go, um which says, what this says is that. If a project raises a finished floor of a home and results in a height of more than fifteen feet, it does not need designer view if it's solely raising the finished floor. No more than two feet above base flood elevation and doesn't include new floor area um or expanded decks and and. The two feet part, um the town only requires one foot above base flood elevation. But allowing people to go the extra amount, um we are seeing a few applications where people want to go a little more than what's required. Um give give these um folks a little more flexibility.
Yeah, and then the the so that's a decision point around how many feet above flood elevation is appropriate. Think two is where we landed and then the other one is. Does not include new floor area or expanded decks and do we want to allow some small additions? You know, or. Expanded decks as part of still being essentially exempt from designer view as part of that.
Let's see who should come in on this.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I really was pleased to see this uh uh in the document. I've talked to a number of people that were doing this, just raising their home. And they were a little peeved at the whole process of getting the variance, but sometimes there was a delay in getting the variance approved that really slowed down the construction process. So I I think this is a great step and I would also support uh the inclusion of uh two hundred and fifty square foot of addition. Would uh not uh trigger design review. Yeah, and I I think that's really important in raising the home. Because uh some people uh will not really, you know, do the the work to. Make the entrance to the home nicer. You know, they've just got that one example, just the stairs that go up. If we uh. Allow them the two hundred and fifty square feet, they can make a more uh uh appropriate staged or staggered. Uh uh approach to the front door that uh, you know, with better landscaping and such, so I I support that.
One from my left over here, a murderer. Do you have any commentary?
I think it's um it's a great thing to encourage people in the floodplain to raise it and if it takes. Making design the process easier, they're still gonna have oversight, I assume, through the permitting process, correct? Um, I think that's a a gr- a great idea. I think that's a good idea. I'm not sure about the addition of the extra space, but I'm. I feel good about the uh two feet, raising it two feet. I think that's a good, a good thing.
Jim.
You know, I I I'm aligned with with Dr. Bundy on this one. I I think that, you know, if we've got exemptions, um they should probably go with the. I think we've got big window exemption, we've got deck, we've got, you know, um some sort of encroachment. It's not, they're they're not huge. But I would go go for that with a not non-design review for something like this. It's someone's trying to improve their property, make it safer. And make it nicer at the same time when they're spending all that money.
Agreed, Dan.
Yeah, I I support this. Clearly, we want people to be raising their floor elevation, first floor elevation above flood. I do have a question, though, about the um. The fifteen-foot height limit in a case where uh someone is doing an addition less than two hundred and fifty feet. And in order for them to match the roof uh of the other part of the house. Now, they've they've raised it two feet and if they have ten-foot ceilings, they're now at twelve feet. Uh and that the fifteen feet may mean they have to go with like a flat roof or some kind of roof that's not really gonna match. So I don't know how to handle that, but. Uh, I could see that as a situation. If you look at this picture that you had of the lower house. Uh, it looks to me like that first floor elevation is three feet, four inches above. Above the street. Uh, counting the risers. So already, the first floor is three feet, four inches. Now you have an eight-foot ceiling. Uh, you know, I'm concerned that is there a way to make an exemption where? That under two hundred and fifty feet, but you have a challenge of. Building the, making the roof match.
Um, I'm not sure if this will answer your question, but we've discussed internally that if we were to allow new floor area. With a FEMA lift. Um. We would measure the height of that before it was lifted to determine whether it needs design review or not. So you look at their addition uh before the house is lifted. Is it less than two fifty? Is it less than fifteen? Then check that box and then then they then they can lift it and do the addition um with it. Um.
Yeah, I think it's interesting because essentially, one of the other rationales for allowing some addition along with lift is that you could. Do the addition first. Two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty square feet and then decide, you know, to lift it. So it's a sort of like a two-step, you know, really, if you can do that, you might as well be allowed to at, you know, do it in one step.
So should that be codified?
Well, that's what we we've talked about. That would be. That would be a way of writing height, the fifteen-foot height limit essentially gets measured from before the lift. And then you're going up together and it's gonna exceed fifteen feet. It's gonna go up to whatever it is, could be, you know, eighteen feet. Um as a result of wherever that finished floor is, and then you have a complete whole roof. Roof line as if it was designed, you know.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
I have, I have a question. What about a two-story house?
Well, cer- yeah, I mean, certainly the second story uh would not. You mean an existing two-story house? Okay.
That's being lifted.
Yeah, we haven't really contemplated that. I don't think we've seen that example yet, but that's a good question for us to think about.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, as the rule goes, everything has been, uh there's some tri-levels, but those are on the hills, by levels, you know, so. Everything. But there are gardens and so forth is, you know, an eight-foot ceiling level down there. That's what everybody's thinking of and that's. You're right, there and there are no two-story homes off out of the ground that have to be lifted particularly, right?
There there are a few uh two-story in Madera Gardens and in in Mariner Cove that. That weren't lifted. The the great vast majority, especially now in Mariner Cove, are putting on a second story. They're lifting it. Um, but Madera Gardens, I think, has two second stories, maybe three that that were lifted along with it and the rest. Um, the second stories over there. Are not lifted right now and I mean, it's a good question.
We may run into that situation um. Where. The next iteration of renovations happens in these neighborhoods and all of a sudden they're.
They have one that.
Or they want to.
Over thirty feet in height with.
Yeah.
Being raised.
Or they voluntarily want to lift it out higher and get that finished floor out of it. So something to think about.
And what about that if they went over thirty feet?
Well, we that you'd have to make the rules allow for it or else we'd be prohibiting them from lifting the home.
I was gonna comment that the houses that I'm aware of that have second stories in Mariner Cove, spe- particularly on the water. Uh, you know, have been uh have been raised, and if somebody was proposing to do a second story, as we've seen. Uh, that would also trigger the requirement to lift the home, and so this would come before us as a major project and uh for approval.
Does people ever want to raise it enough where it could be a wine cellar or otherwise storage? Is it always just a?
Could you step up to the mic, please, and state it succinctly?
So, well, my question, because I'm new to this part, is do people ever want to raise it enough where it's useful, like for a wine cellar or otherwise storage? Um, or is it always just a crawl space?
It's still a floodplain and you you know, it's subject to to really water intrusion, so you really can't. It'll do anything there.
But does it flood regularly? Because it would look like you'd be losing your beautiful garage doors in the example that you're showing, or is it just? In case of sea level rise, is it?
No, it's it's required to be non-occupiable space by FEMA. For right, it's it's a, it's a federal regulation.
But if it's a boat or a.
You can have a garage. I mean, you can have storage.
Under your house. I'm talking about when you put, can you store?
Yeah.
Your surfboard under your house.
Yeah, sure.
Only only livable space, habitable space.
Wouldn't be covered by your plunges. Yeah.
Right.
And.
I do think it's it raises, I mean, one one of the things that I know in other jurisdictions have talked about is as we see more of this, what other sorts of. Design. Regulations may be appropriate. I mean, this one looks perfectly nice, but I know, for example. Um, and this was actually happening in New York City at the time where they were grazing it. They wanted to make sure that you had lattice. Or something that you could actually see into the crawl space because they didn't want people living. Under in the, turning them into bedrooms. Turning them into extra rooms. And I mean, that's an extreme example, but you can imagine that same thing in a place like San Francisco where. Demand for any sort of housing or units is is so extreme that you, somebody could, if it's raised, you know, high enough. Carve out, you know, a a basement out of that space and they didn't want to see any of that, so. There's other, there are other things just about design and how it looks as you start seeing these houses raised. There's other, there are other things just about design and how it looks. As you start seeing these houses raised, do you want to encourage certain types of. Landscaping or stairway design or something that so it actually. But yeah, that's not as much. We we see nicely designed houses raised and the homeowners seem to want to do that as well. I just. Other locations, you'll, when you see places raised, it's not always a pretty sight. And so there's. That's where some. Um, guidelines have come in into play elsewhere, but that's not specific to design review. So it's it's sort of. It does relate to a broader conversation that we've had about and is directly. Related to some of our policies in the climate adaptation assessment. About. This accommodate strategy, which this is part of accommodating sea level rise. And climate adaptation measures by allowing people and removing some of the barriers to allow people to actually. Live with some uh, additional um, maybe water from time to time as tides, you know. To your point, it would be more. Less frequent, but still consistent flooding that may happen uh, in future years, so. I know we got to do a time check.
One comment, if if you did a lift of a house, uh, and years later you wanted to add on to your building and it's going to be. Your house is now going to be higher than fifteen feet or you're locking yourself out of giving, having that option. It, I just think that should be considered. I mean, because you're making an exemption. For these people, that that maybe it should be, there should be an exemption for this neighborhood, I would think that would allow them to go up to whatever their existing height is. Uh, or at least one story of least of that uh, to consider. Thank you.
But that could be something that could be a a design review item. Yeah, right, right. Okay, all right. So here we are at ten oh. Late and. And um, I'm seeing that the next uh. Element is a biggie uh, threshold for design review, elevated decks, patios and yards. Uh, that's a significant chunk. Um, because there's lots of history here and lots of discussion, so um. I know that it's past my bedtime, so how about the rest of the crew here?
Good time to call it quits.
Okay. That said, um, there's nobody online. So thank you guys. Um, I'm going to say let's adjourn this meeting.